Abila.
Here.
Councilmember Ayala?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hernandez?
Present.
And Mayor Lozano?
Present, thank you very much. Alrighty, okay, so at this point I will go ahead and ask Dr. Flores, who will do the invocation, Dr. Flores?
Thank you Mayor, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Great. Gracious God, we thank you for today, and the new mercies and grace that you make available for us to, to, to live and be as human beings here in the city of Baldwin Park. Thank you Lord for the opportunity Lord to interact with our citizens, our council, or mayor, Lord, all who are created in your image. But we are mindful of the challenges we face today as a society, as a culture, as a city. We lift up Lord our petitions and our requests, Lord, for healing, for protection, for safety. But we pray for wisdom in our leadership, Lord. Help us, guide us, Lord, to be honorable and prudent, to be efficient and effective. But we thank you for our, our family, our Baldwin Park family, Lord, we lift this up to you, Lord. We know some struggle, some face challenges economically, some with mental health issues, some with physical health issues, some have lost life, Lord, and we just pray, Lord, for your comforting spirit. Lord, your reminder that there is peace, Lord, in a city. Lord, you're reminded that you're protecting your city and your citizens, Lord. We commit this to you Father, and we thank you God. Gracias señor por este privilegio señor para pedir a que en esta ciudad ayuda señor en este momento en el nombre de Jesucristo. Amen.
Amen, thank you Pastor Flores, thank you very much for those beautiful words. Alright, thank you very much. There, am I, am I, am I on, as far as my photo there? Oh, there's my photo, there. I was wondering where, where, I'm sorry about that. Dr. Flores, thank you very much for, for beautiful words. Alright, so at this point, council members wishing to close on anyone's behalf? I, I just first of all want to mention our, our continued support for the two officers that were shot by an individual in the city of Compton, I mean, a coward act and the sad part, they have not caught this, this criminal. And I hope that the Sheriff's Department along with all the police agencies are able to capture this individual. So our, we, our support goes out, the female deputy and the male deputy as well, so wishing them a speedy recovery. Thank you, alright, so.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, council member Monica Garcia.
Thank you, I'd like to close on behalf of our council colleague from the city of La Fuente. Councilmember Dan Holloway, who passed away suddenly last week, and just offer our condolences to the La Fuente family and to the Holloway family. Dan was such a kind man and always open and just so humble and whenever I would call, I always, you know, he would just speak so, he was so approachable, in other words. And so, he will certainly be missed, he had a very big heart for his community and for his family. And so, I just want to offer our condolences on his sudden passing.
Thank you Councilmember Monica Garcia, I'm glad you met, you mentioned that Dan Holiday, a good friend, you work with one of my aunts for years, one of those aeronautics up in the Torrance area, I believe, and non-judgmental, compassionate and caring. So our condolences goes out to his family, Mr. Dan Holloway. So we could send a letter to the council members there that we close on his behalf. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to close on anyone else's behalf? Alright, at this point if not, I will go ahead and ask our deputy city clerk if we had any requests for public communication. Ms. Robles?
Yes, we did, we had two.
Okay. Alrighty. Boy, doing this from my little iPhone here compared to my Mac screen, so. We're calling the first caller, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, um, give me one second, um, it went to.
That's fine. It went to voicemail? Oh, got everyone here.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was from Mr. Greg Tuttle, and the next speaker is Mr. John Rios, let me try him.
Thank you. We did twice for Mr. Tuttle, am I correct?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Rios, this is Daniel Lozano, Mayor Baldwin Park, we're calling you sir, and you have your three minutes to speak, thank you.
You will tell me when to slide?
Yeah, we'll go, we'll start the clock, we're almost there, Ms. Robles?
Yes, we can start.
Okay, we're ready to go, go ahead. Thank you.
That's Morales, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry about that, I wrote, oh, sorry Ms. Morales. Thank you very much Councilmember Alejandro, don't start the clock yet. Alright, thank you, at this point we're going to go ahead and start the clock, Mr. Rios, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, thank you, go ahead sir.
Okay, I want, uh, whatever you said, translate it into Spanish, okay?
Yes sir, that's fine.
I'm sorry, into, into Spanish?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, but maybe it's to Spanish. The last time you guys translated, it was used. Okay?
That, go ahead.
Okay. With the problem is that you guys are, when we asked for, for the translation, you're supposed to give us six minutes, okay? And you guys are not. And another thing is that why don't we get the eleven minutes that you guys had for that letter that they sent in? Starting with the clerk and everybody in the city council, the head, the mayor, and the chief of don't you guys understand three minutes? You're supposed to give three minutes, you guys had put that letter for eleven minutes. Okay? Totally wrong what you guys are doing. You guys been doing this for years. Now that the, the new chief, McLean, you know, he came back and he says that he's going to see you guys in court. All of a sudden, we are getting letter from the community, a lot of people calling in to take money away from the police department. The plan that the, the chief had was a perfect plan. He told you guys that he wishes the first year should have gone on reduce it by a million dollars. You guys didn't want to give him that extra, extra chief. You know, uh, you guys are totally kind of ahead. And another thing is, was that old statement? That Lozano, you wanted the service to come in? And you guys couldn't get it in because you guys owe too much money on the PR first? The judge told you guys that you cannot do it? It wasn't who got elected or who didn't get elected, it was a judge that told you guys that you couldn't do it. We're in the same situation right now with all the lawsuits that we have in the city. You know, and it's, you guys, you know, you want to go steal, go steal someplace else, don't regular Baldwin Park. And this thing about, you've got Baldwin Park fifty years. Yeah, you've got Baldwin Park, but you're stealing from it, from the citizens of Baldwin Park. That, that's all I need to say right now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rios, for taking your opportunity to speak and, and public communication, so at this point.
Um, thank you.
Yes, translation.
In Spanish, el praga tiene que durar, durarnos seis minutos, tienen que dar seis minutos y está mal con lo que están haciendo ahora con el nuevo jefe de policía que se va, ah, que se fue. La comunidad está hablando, él hizo lo que iba a hacer con el dinero, en el dos mil siete también el juez les dijo que no se podía hacer, no los que fueron apuntados o elegidos. Estamos en el mismo lugar, si quieren robar, roben en otra ciudad, no en esta, y eso con lo que dice de viva Baldwin Park. Sí, usted dice viva Baldwin Park porque está robando de nuestra comunidad.
Alright, thank you, that, that is the public communication, I just want to extend to Mr. Rios that if he has any evidence or documentation, photos, he should submit them to the deputy city clerk. Ya decirle la persona que acabó de hablar si tiene documentos, si tiene fotos, pruebas, que las entregue al municipio, muchas gracias. Alright, thank you, so at this point we're going to, we do not have any presentations, but so at this point, we'll go over to the consent calendar, but before I do that, just want to read out the councils are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this, this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority meeting and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting, alrighty? So before I forget, I want to go ahead and.
There are two presentations Mayor.
Yeah, there are, okay, then, let me see, oh, the, the hold on, thank you, thank you Ms. Abila for reminding, alright, so we do have the, the presentation, we have the Rental Housing and Business Assistance Program, Coronavirus Act Relief Fund, and the presentation by Mr. Ben Martinez. Thank you Councilmember Abila for reminding me, at this point, Mr. Ben Martinez, sir.
Good evening Mayor and City Council, again, it's Ben Martinez, Community Development Director of the city of Baldwin Park, thank you. The city of Baldwin Park, like other municipalities in the state of California, has received CARES Act funding to assist with activities related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Two of the activities that the council has allocated funding to are housing rental assistance and business assistance. So tonight's presentation are, is to discuss those two programs, get any council input, and then proceed with those programs as quickly as possible. The funding that we are getting, the CARES Act funding, it's on a very tight timeframe, we need to spend this money by the end of the year. And so, we don't have a lot of time and we've been working diligently and putting these programs together, we need to enact, enact them right away and then spend the money, get it out into the community in the, in the, you know, the best way possible, and then report on those monies and make sure we meet all requirements. So I will start with the, the first one is the Housing Rental Assistance Program, and the purpose of that program is to assist Baldwin Park tenants and landlords affected by, like I said, the COVID-19 pandemic. We mainly would like to prevent the displacement of renters and we, we certainly do not want to add to homelessness in our community, and we want to provide a temporary rent subsidy for Baldwin Park tenants. Next slide is eligibility, and, and we want to provide this assistance to only rental property in the city of Baldwin Park that is legally permitted. So unfortunately, if a unit is not legally permitted, we, we don't, and we should not provide assistance in that situation. We want to see written leases with verifiable addresses. We need to see total household income at or below fifty percent of LA County median income. So we, we really, the objective of this program as staff is proposing it to the city council is to help the most needy in these, in these situations. We know there's a lot of need, we can't help everybody, but we're suggesting fifty percent of LA County median income levels. Income eligible households financially impacted by COVID-19, so again, the, the, the whole purpose is that your household was impacted by COVID-19 and it impacted your job, impacted your income, and that's why you need the assistance from the city. And we need that documented, your job loss, layoff, or your reduced hours or reduced pay. Households that are ineligible are pretty obvious, those already receiving assistance such as Section Eight voucher households, households facing current eviction or foreclosure proceedings, or issues other than non-payment of rent from March first present. So, you know, if, if there's another situation and the person, the household is being evicted for a non-payment, anything other than a non-payment, we, we can't, we can't assist. Households residing in public housing are also already being assisted, so we cannot provide additional assistance in that situation. Assistance available, so we're, we're, we're putting together a program that, and proposing up to six months of rental payment assistance. Assistance may cover past due balance for rent beginning no earlier than March first, 2020. Maximum amounts up to twenty-five hundred per month to cover past due rent from March first onward, related again to COVID-19. And applicants may qualify for one to six months of assistance for a maximum of six thousand dollars, that's what we're suggesting. So please note, we want to help people that have been already in a predicament, not paying their rent for months now, but we also potentially are assisting people that are newly in a predicament and cannot pay their rent and need help. Assistance available will be made directly, the payments will be made directly to the landlord. Rental subsidy is also taxable income to that landlord, so just note there. Property owners, the landlords must agree to not charge interest or late fees, not evict tenants for six months after January thirty-first, 2021, and not impose rent increases during the repayment period or until January thirty-one, 2021. And that's the state, that's the deadline and the finishing date for the state eviction moratorium. The requirements, again, eligible households up to fifty percent of county median income, I'll show you what that is right now. Proof of tenancy, do you have a rental or lease agreement? Proof of all the people in the household that are eighteen and older, we need to see all the income. Again, documented COVID-19 financial impact. And one application per household, we're also, we expect a lot of demand for this program, and we do have only limited funds, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, so we are suggesting a lottery type of selection. If we don't get a lot of demand, then we, we can probably help everyone that applies, but we are expecting that there will be a lot of people requesting assistance. And here are the 2020 annual income limits. As you can see, just for a, a four-person household, fifty percent puts you at about fifty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. So still a lot of income, you know, for a four-person household. Well, not a lot of income, but we're suggesting that we assist those people that are underneath, under that, that guideline of fifty-six thousand, three hundred. So we address the most needy. The process, we're with the council's blessing to move forward, we are suggesting that we do outreach next week and the beginning, and a little bit the following week. And we open up the applications afterwards. I think I have a, a better slide here, we talked about eligibility and, I'm sorry, lottery and so forth. Let, let's see, your next steps, outreach until September twenty-seventh, okay? So a little bit of outreach so that people will see what we're offering and have a chance to get ready to apply. And then we will make the initial application available September twenty-eighth to October fifth, that's the two weeks, okay? So we do a little bit of outreach and social media and so forth. People get ready to apply September twenty-eighth through October fifth, two weeks. Then afterwards, we, we look at those initial applications and we do a lottery selection, okay? On or around a, a little bit after October fifth, okay? And the lucky winner, so to speak, will move to the final application process, which I'm suggesting to be on or around October twenty-second. And then after those final applications are reviewed and, and approved for, for accuracy and completeness, we will award funds in early November. So we're, again, on a tight timeframe to get this project moving forward. Let me stop there and see if there's any questions on the residence, Rental Assistance Program for Housing before I move to the business grants. Is there any question?
Ben, how are you going to do the outreach?
We will do everything we can, including obviously the city's website, the city's media, social media means. We could even do a press release. We will get the word out, obviously, the best we can to the, some of the major residential properties in town. We can't do every single unit, but some of the larger ones, we will certainly get notice to those managers. And that's just off the top of my head, but we'll make every means, we'll do every means available to us to get the outreach.
Have you already had people reach out to you regarding assistance?
We've had a few, and we've kept their names and emails, and we will be sending them the information.
Okay, that was my next question, okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing, no, no further questions or comments, I'll move to the business grants program.
Ben, this is Monica Garcia, I just want to say that it sounds like a great program and thank you for working on this. It's much needed right now in our community, so thank you.
You're welcome, and, and my staff and, and I have been working on this for weeks now. We have studied what other cities have done, and we tried to put together a program that will get the assistance out there quickly, but we still meet the guidelines, and we, we do everything we can to help people, but also avoid fraud situations or anything like that. So, thank you, and let's see what you think of the business grants program, and, and if there's not any changes, we'll, we'll move forward on this very quickly. The business grants program, the purpose is to assist Baldwin Park businesses, again, impacted by COVID-19. Support small businesses, existing small businesses, help stabilize the tax base, retain jobs as much as we can, prevent eviction, of course, if we can, prevent vacant commercial sites, again, and, and provide revenue at loss, you know, because a lot of commercial property owners have lost revenue, so if we can help in those situations, they're suffering too. Eligibility, we're suggesting business and/or nonprofits with ten or fewer employees. We are asking that the employer, if they receive the assistance, retain at least one low-modern income person located, of course, the business must be located in the city of Baldwin Park. We are asking for one year of operations, so we want a business that's been, we're suggesting a business be in business for one year, they didn't just open up yesterday, that they, they've been in operations for at least one year. We are suggesting that it be a brick and mortar type of business, not like a lunch truck or something, or a home-based business, that'd be a brick and mortar business. Businesses that have received other federal assistance such as PPP loans or other things. Also, we are suggesting that if they have received other types of assistance, and they are successful in getting this business grant, that they don't use it for the same thing, okay, that's what we're suggesting for the guidelines. Eligible businesses, real estate-related cannabis, massage, liquor sales, we don't have adult industry businesses, but gaming, also franchise corporate-owned, okay, so if a family owns a single, let's say like Pollo Local business, they would be eligible if they're a franchisee, but if it's a corporate-owned store, we're suggesting that, that, that corporate-owned store, like a McDonald's or, you know, would not be eligible. Assistance available, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, just like the Rental Housing Assistance Program. The grants would be five thousand dollars, we could assist fifty-four businesses in this way. And we are suggesting that the eligible expenses be the typical things, rent, utilities, equipment and supplies for operations to continue, and also employee payroll. So we want, again, we want to make this process as easy as possible, but we do need some information. And we hope that we've strike here at the, 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 the balance, you know, between those two. So the requirements we're suggesting is that they do show us a tax return, if, if they're chosen into the final application process, they, that they show us the tax return for 2019, last year. They show us a profit and loss statement for the last quarter of nineteen, so we see, and we have a financial picture of how they were doing before COVID, okay? This profit and loss statement can be done by the business or them, themselves, it doesn't have to be done by an accountant, they don't have to spend a lot of money, but some sort of financial statement that shows us how they were doing last year. And we will compare that to the statement they would provide for the last three months. So we want to see how they were doing before COVID and after COVID, and then we'll see that, that, you know, they've had an economic impact and they qualify. We also just, we want to see employee payroll data to verify just the number of employees, we don't need to see social security numbers or anything like that, but just basic employee payroll data to see how many employees they have, a copy of, of course, the Baldwin Park business license is obviously a, a, a good thing for us to see, and a copy of their lease, rental agreement, or proof of ownership on, and mortgage statement, if, if that's the case. So that we make sure that they're in a, a legal situation with their property. We want to see bank statements for a couple of months, business and personal, we want to, you know, we don't want to impede too much, but we just want to make sure that someone wouldn't potentially have, you know, a ton of money in their personal account and, 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 you know, try to take advantage of this program, we've seen some stories kind of like that in the news, it's other types of assistance, but in much bigger dollars, but we want to avoid those situations. Proof of insurance is, is, is important. Certified the retention of at least one or low-modern income person, so we want to see that, that they certify that they are, you know, they've assisted, our assistance has gone in the, you know, it is assisted, it has helped them retain a, 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 an employee, which is, you know, one of the main purposes to assist people with this program. And then for nonprofits, you know, they, we'd also want to see a demonstration of the negative impact, reduction in donations and so forth, and also proof that it, that they are a nonprofit organization. The application process, again, will be open for two weeks, lottery-based, and with an initial application, and then moving on to the final application process. This is exactly like the rental housing, next slide. And this same exact slide is rental housing, we give time to, to do that outreach. We'll create as much of a buzz as we can to let people know about the program. We will make the applications available for two weeks, again, September twenty-eighth to October fifth, we'll have a, most likely a lottery selection, and we will go into the final application, again, that's where they will submit the actual documents that we're asking for, in the initial application, they're just checking boxes and saying we have it, and we'll, we will submit it if we are chosen in the lottery. Then if they make it to the final, they will actually submit the documents, we will verify that they, everything is, is as we requested, and then we will award funding in November. And that concludes my, you know, my, my overall presentation, is there any comments on the business grants program?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Hernandez.
Thank you, Ben, thank you very much and your team, I know this is something that's been is expected from the community, both on the rental and on the business side. I just have two suggestions or recommendations for the business grant. Considering that, you know, we're only doing five thousand dollars, this is really a micro loan, excuse me, micro grant, and really for the size of the businesses of ten and Um, and really for the size of the businesses of ten employees and less, um, what I would suggest that, uh, my colleagues, uh, help adopt is that, you know, any business that received, uh, or was awarded, you know, uh, previously PPE money, um, that they not be eligible for this money. Uh, that way there's, uh, our, our smaller mom and pops, I'll call them, uh, are eligible for this type of funding. So that would be one. And then the other thing was, uh, under the assistance availability, under the eligible expenses, uh, you have listed rent, utilities, equipment, supplies, uh, for operation and payroll. Um, I would say that we strike utilities out. Um, you know, one of the largest costs of running a business is payroll, uh, rent and, uh, you know, obviously buying the supplies and so, so forth. Uh, utilities, you know, it's one of those things. I think, uh, these operations can be used, you know, can do on their own. Uh, but I would really like to see that this money be used more towards either rent, uh, rents, uh, you know, equipment and supplies for the operation to be able to make their sales and more importantly payroll. So those are my two, uh, adjustments or edits I'd like to make to the program, you know, if my colleagues agree.
Yeah, that's fine. That's, that sounds good. The recommendation that Vice Mayor Hernandez has suggested. Anyone else have any other questions?
Well, I think the utilities is important too, because that puts the, the company in a bind if they don't have money to pay their utilities. How can they run their business if they can't pay utilities? So I would like to leave that on there.
Okay, so at this point, uh, Councilmember Avila, we, we got, making reference to the utilities of the businesses. Will that impede, um, what, uh, what, uh, Vice Mayor Hernandez suggestion?
Um, I mean, I'm open to it, uh, Councilmember Avila, but I think, you know, my, my position on that particular item is, uh, you know, the money should really be used for the, the, the real major costs of an operation of running a business. And the, the three major costs, uh, you know, for a five thousand dollar grant, uh, should either be used for rent, uh, again, in my opinion, um, equipment and supplies, right? Because that's the biggest cost, your raw, raw materials. And of course payroll, which is your biggest costs for a, you know, a, a small operation of ten people or less. Um, utilities, you know, if you're, you're probably running, you know, it's probably water and electricity and those are probably going to be fairly, uh, small. And I, and my hope is, again, uh, that they, you know, that this five thousand dollars is used towards those three other major items.
I can, I can see the gas being small, but the electricity, especially right now, that it's so hot. Uh, utility bills are running really high when it comes to electricity. So if we would just leave it open that if they needed to pay the electric bill with that money, they may do so because again, the, the heat wave is really bad. Electric bills are really high, especially in a business. So I, I would like to keep that on there. I think it would benefit them more. And then if they need to use it for that, they can use it. If not, they can pay, do it towards payroll or whatever they need.
Absolutely, not a problem. So Ben, it's just the, uh, if they receive PPE money in the past, they're not eligible. Um, I concur with Councilmember Avila. Not a, not a, it's not a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilmembers, anyone else? I, I, I just want to say, first of all, Ben, uh, Martinez and everyone at, uh, Partuchin getting this program together, it's an opportunity, uh, for the city of Baldwin Park, businesses and residents and, and so on and so forth, uh, especially at a time that we're dealing with pandemic, with lots of jobs, and this is a necessity, there's no doubt. The unfortunate part is that it will be based on the lottery, which obviously does make it fair, because it's almost impossible. But that will also, we will, we will also be looking, um, at the amount of, uh, applicants. So that will determine whether or not, uh, there is, uh, a great need or not. So it's depending upon the application. Am I correct on that, Mr. Uh, Ms. Martinez, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. It would have been on how many applications?
Okay, all righty. So that is, uh, three hundred, three hundred thousand, uh, for businesses, three hundred thousand for housing. I don't have it in front of me with the agenda. Uh, could we, uh, read off those numbers, please?
Yeah, it's two hundred and seventy thousand for program funding for each.
Okay, two hundred and seventy, I stand corrected. All right, thank you. So I, I think this is going to be an opportunity, uh, to get out to the community. When we look at Baldwin Park, I mean, we were on the forefront, uh, compared to other cities, offering the, uh, the, the actual COVID nineteen, uh, testing. And then again, having a care program that we're kicking out here. So we've definitely done our share in our part, uh, besides some of the nonprofit churches that have been distributing food, uh, throughout our community. So Baldwin Park residents have come together. This is really awesome. It's an opportunity for us, uh, to, uh, assure, uh, the communities that we're doing within the best interest of the city. So thank you, thank you all the participants for this.
Yes, Ben, and I want to thank you because I know I've been calling you and texting you, um, sending you messages that are, you know, residents and business owners have need assistance and I know you've been responding to them. And I know you're really busy, you have a lot on your plate, but thank your team. I know it's a lot of work, but, um, it's for the benefit of our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you very much for those words as well, Ms. Agler. It's wrong, uh, uh, Ms. Avila. All right, so Ben Martinez, thank you. Councilmembers have any other questions? Looking forward to this, uh, uh, the, the distributor, the distribution of this program.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia?
I just want to reiterate to say thank you to staff for working on yet two more programs that are so beneficial for our community. And I think that this just further develops the programs that we implemented early on with the food voucher program, the hotline that was established so that we could understand what the needs of our community, uh, what, what they were exactly. So, you know, just know, I know that this has been a continued effort and, um, you know, this is a further development. So want to thank staff for working so diligently on this and, you know, just expanding the programs and expanding the access for, for our community, especially during these very difficult times. So thank you.
I thank you, Councilmember Monica Garcia. Councilmembers wishing to share any other information? If not, if not at this point, thank you very much, Ben. Okay, next presentation is the, uh, two thousand, twenty twenty election presentation update by Chief Deputy City Clerk Ms. Luis Morales. Thank you.
Thank you, um, thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Uh, the County of Los Angeles is working closely with all of the municipalities within its jurisdiction to ensure all citizens feel safe casting their votes in the upcoming election. Uh, and they actually have a guide. Thank you. Um, so election workers have received training, and not only to assist with the new ballot marking devices, but also to have, they've received training to deal with the current demands of the pandemic, um, such as practicing self-screening of physical distancing and following state guidelines under COVID nineteen. Um, additionally, all registered voters will receive a vote by mail ballot. Uh, and this will start being mailed on October fifth. Next slide, please. The city of Baldwin Park will have two ballot boxes provided in and maintained by the county to safely drop off your vote by mail ballot. Uh, one will be located at Kaiser and the other will be placed in front of the Baldwin Park Library. Um, this particular box is a drive-up box. Um, and it's one in, um, ten in the Los Angeles County, the region. So we were able to secure, um, that and that's pretty big for us. Next is, uh, this is just the, the way the ballot boxes look. On the big one on the left-hand side is the drive-up. Sorry, is the walk-up one. This one will be placed at Kaiser. Uh, the one on the right will be placed in front of the library. Uh, the drive-up one also has a walkable, uh, drop-off at the other side. So it functions, uh, it has both functions. Next slide. The vote centers will be customized to ensure physical distance is followed. Doors will be propped open to avoid handling the knobs. Windows will be open to increase air circulation and will be equipped with masks and washing stations for those wishing to utilize them. Next. There will also be, uh, clear signage, uh, will be placed to indicate safe distances and remind the public to wear masks. Um, and this is just the bullet points for the vote center layout. Next slide, please. I think I already went over that. Please, next slide. Okay, so voting by mail is a safe choice. Um, those feeling weary regarding the US Postal Service during this pandemic may complete their vote by mail, uh, at the comfort of their home and drop it off at any local vote center or those big yellow boxes maintained by the county. Um, this is a step we can take to limit exposure and ensure our vote is safely casted. Um, next slide, please. And, uh, these are a few links. Uh, the first is if you're registered to vote. The second is, uh, the look up, to look up a voting center. And then next is to look up the ballot drop box. This is a twenty-four hour box. Um, once you cast your vote, you can always track your ballot at levo.net to ensure your vote was also counted. Um, so aside from just casting your vote, you're able to track it as well. Um, so if, if you're, you know, if there, if anyone has a question in regards to whether their ballot, um, was actually casted, um, there's a, a feature that LA County is offering to track it. And that concludes my presentation. If anyone has any questions?
Yes, Ms. Lulu. Sorry, Ms. Lulu, do you know whereabouts Kaiser this box will be? What area of Kaiser?
Yes, it's right, right in front of the entrance of Kaiser, um.
The main entrance?
Emergency area, yeah. It's curb, they're both, they're both curbside.
Okay, the emergency area. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. All right, that's the.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Monica Garcia.
Okay, so learn this, um, the idea is that we're going to mail these ballots back via the United States Postal Service, right?
That's an option.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, yes, that's an option.
Okay, and then the other option is to drop them off at these, uh, ballot boxes, the two designated sites in the city.
Correct, um, or a voting center.
Okay, how many voting centers will we have in the city?
So we're still, the county is still wrapping that up. Um, we don't have an, uh, a number yet. Uh, the only reason I know we have two boxes is because I work closely with the county to secure those. Um, but in regards to the voting centers, uh, they're also working with the schools. So I, I don't know the number just yet. Um, they haven't been made public, but as soon as I receive that, I'll forward it to council.
Okay, and let me ask you about kind of the thinking out there. Is, does it sound like they're going to reduce the number of voting sites, polling sites? Um, they, they are significantly?
They, they, they are really encouraging everyone to cast their ballot, um, via mail, via these drop-off locations, the ballot boxes. They're trying to limit exposure. And so it doesn't necessarily mean, um, and they're trying to limit sites due to that, uh.
Mm-hmm.
But there also is early voting and that's another tool, um, or that's another, um.
It's kind of encourage, encouraging them to get it in earlier.
Right, yeah.
Is that going to be two weeks?
Yes, it, the early voting date begins, um, on October thirtieth. Some are open as, as early as October twenty-fourth.
Okay. Uh, all right, and what will likely happen, because this is a new system and I think people are getting the idea of social distancing, is I, I can already see cars lining, kind of, you know, pulling up and wanting to drop off their ballots that way at their, um, at the sites where they've historically voted. And so is there any discussion around that?
I will work closely with, I've actually already had a conversation with Sam and Sam and his team have been great. Um, they accommodated, they went above and beyond to accommodate those ballot boxes. But we've had conversations in regards to the lines, um, and, um, Sam offered to, um, have staff, uh, to direct traffic if need be with signage. And I'm also going to work with, uh, the police department on, to ensure that at least for that night, um, we're a little bit more relaxed in issuing citations, um, specifically if someone's dropping off their ballot or voting.
Mm-hmm, you mean at those, at the two designated ballot sites? The ballot drop box, drop box?
And, and at the voting centers. We'll have voting centers.
Yeah, because if the voting sites, if they're going to have staff and you're part of the conversations with the LA County Registrar's Office, um, then I think maybe there should be some conversation or some planning around, you know, allowing people to drive through with their cars, very similar to, let's say, what the school district was doing to deliver meals, right? So you have a car that pulls up, yeah, and maybe drops off the ballot and then continues on. I, I, I just think that that's probably a likely scenario. And I'm just wondering if the County Registrar's Office is planning ahead and, and it'd be curious, you know, to know. This is all new. Um, we were having a new system to begin with and now with COVID. So I'm just looking ahead and trying to reduce confusion. And so if you can have those conversations with the County Registrar's Office and, um, you know, if they can anticipate that kind of operation, plus walk-ups, of course, um, you know, people that, that just, like seniors that may not drive and, um, that may just walk the community. So I know that the push is to mail, you know, via USPS and then it sounds like these drop boxes, which that's great. You know, thank you for your work on advocating for our sites. Um, but I also think that, that, you, you know, the evening of the election, um, I just kind of foresee that people will still want to resort to the old ways, right? Yeah, and so I'd be curious to know the conversation around that and if you can keep us posted.
Will do. I'll circle back with the county and provide you with an update. I do know that they are offering curbside voting and curbside drop-off at every, uh, location. Um, and I think that's the idea is to, uh, reduce the individuals from coming into the center
Right.
accepting them at the curbside location.
Um, but exactly, okay, so, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
But I will circle back and, and make sure that that's the, that that's the actual plan. Um, I'm not sure if it's solely to vote curbside or if they're also, um, going to accept. So I'll confirm with them and circle back with council.
Oh, I see, okay. Yeah, that's exactly what I was, um, getting at, is the curbside, you know, dropping off the ballots or, or voting. So it does sound like they're having those conversations. So just keep us posted.
Of course, will do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a question, Ms. Morales. I'm kind of concerned, so the indicator here is that the, um, drop-off is going to be the emergency? So we're talking about Beth or Zach Garvey?
I'm sorry, the emergency.
The, the emergency entrance where the, where the Kaiser's at? So is that the street they're going to be, where the drop-off box is going to be at?
That's the street, but it's not right at the entrance, it's curbside.
Oh, you know what, I'm just wondering, okay, so is it going to be on Baldwin Park side, on the Baldwin Park Boulevard?
It's, Sam, is it Baldwin Park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so the drop box is going to be, um, adjacent to the main entrance, um, uh, along Baldwin Park Boulevard. So, uh, it's just going to be offset. So it's quite a distance away from the entrance to, uh, the emergency.
I see, so it's more, it's more centralized, the main entrance area, okay. That makes it, okay, that make, that, because I was trying to picture, because the traffic that kind of circles around that, 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 um, the exit of freeway and so on and so forth, perfect then, okay, that's fine. So secondly, uh, Ms. Morales, you also mentioned, so we do, we'll have one at the library, am I correct? So how many total do we have right now? Two that we know of?
Two drop-off ballot boxes that we know of, but those are just the drop-off boxes. The voting centers, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know that the Arc is, is one location, is a one voting center, um, because we, we deal with staff, because we, we deal with staff, but I, I don't know for certain of the other locations. And matter of fact, we're still working with the county to, to visit cert, some sites and, and see if we can obtain those sites.
Okay, secondly, well, my other question is, when, or when will the residents start getting the actual ballots themselves?
October 5th is the first, is the first batch that's going to be mailed, but the sample ballots, they'll start mailing those at September 24th, the actual, the actual ballots, though, October 5th.
Okay, so the actual ballots, October 5th, all right, thank you, appreciate that, and then, so, so everyone will get their ballots, and so they're not going to be separating the permanent absentee ballots, in essence, everyone is going to get their, their ballot, am I correct? That was the way that's working, okay, all right. That'd be very interesting for everyone, this totally new. All right, thank you very much, any other questions? All right, if not, thank you very much, Ms. Morales, for that.
And I just want to say, thank you, Lulu, I know all the work it takes to coordinate with the county and to put it, all this together, and especially during this pandemic. I know it probably has been challenging, and it is a lot of work, so thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Good thing, it was a, it was a learning experience, for sure.
I bet, thank you.
Thank you, all right, thank you very much for that. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the consent calendar, so we have items one through, one through eight, council members wishing to pull any item.
Mr. Mayor, can I pull item three and number five, please?
Okay, three and number five, okay. All right, anyone else? If not, at this point, I'll go ahead and entertain motion to pass the consent calendar with the exception of item three and five, that is my motion. Hello?
Second.
Second.
Okay, well, second by, by, by Vice Mayor Hernandez, any objections, see not so move. Item number three, which is the ratify and adopt resolution adopting the Ballpark Police Complaint Investigation Policy Procedure, that Vice Mayor Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take this opportunity and have our chief just kind of give a brief overview in regards to, you know, what this policy and procedure does. Because what we will be doing is, we will be ratifying this at a council level, so future chiefs or future departments, members, you know, won't be able to deviate from the policy, considering that, you know, one of the things that we're trying to, you know, continue to do is, you know, have a transparent process, you know, the complaint process, but also for our residents and our team members, police officers and civilians, you know, fully understand exactly what it is that we'll be doing in the future as it involves the HR department. Chief?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor, City Council, I appreciate the time. One of the things that I like, outline is Laura Thomas from HR was instrumental in putting the wording and the things that we worked through this together, so I want to address her, that she's the one that really put the, put the information together for your review. Again, it's, it's, the, the policy is, we've always had, within the police department, from what I've reviewed, it's just strengthening the, the collaboration, making sure HR is well aware of the complaints that we're handling and any, and the outcomes that may impact civil litigation or those kind of things. And again, also working with HR to make sure that the things that were, the discipline and those kind of things that were in sorry, I lost my train of thought, but we're, we're working together to, to that end, you know, and again, I think there's a thing also about education relative to complaints and, and the process. We have just purchased, or waiting to have training on IA Pro and Blue Shield, which is two programs that are designed to not only provide information relative to complaint investigations, the outcomes and the status, as well as an early warning system for those officers that have continual complaints, whether it be a use of force, it'd be a verbal complaint of some sort, you know, discourtesy, those kind of things, that we're on the front end of making sure that we're mitigating and understanding officers' behavior and making sure that the behavior that they're the causes of complaint or causes of concern, we're at the front end of making sure that we're either providing training or that it requires progressive discipline, we're starting with a progressive discipline to address those issues.
Thank you, Chief, and just one other note for the, for the rest of us is, you know, this step is, you know, one of the best practices as we move forward. You know, as the chief mentioned, you know, the department will soon have some software that'll be help, you know, tracking complaints internally and externally, in and around officers and so forth, so we can help mitigate or address, you know, items before they become, you know, a bigger issue for us. And again, this is something that, you know, there's been several reports that have mentioned these type of processes and procedures as some of the best practices, and, you know, as with the rest of our other departments, you know, our police department is, you know, trying to move forward and lean in a direction that's a little bit more proactive than it has in the past, thank you.
Excuse me.
All right, thank you.
One more thing, is the other thing is, I'll be able to provide a statistical report to, to the council relative to the complaints we're taking in, and, and just there are different types of analysis that we will be able to do through these both programs that we're discussing.
All right, thank you, Chief, thank you for the presentation, Chief, and all right, thank you, so at this point, people will entertain a motion to ratify and adopt the resolution approving the Ballpark Police Complaint Investigation Policy Procedure, so who wants to make the motion?
I'll second, you already made it.
No, I didn't, no, okay, that's fine, all right. At this point, any objections, see not so move, I was proposing it. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to item number four, which is adopt Resolution Number 2020-044, a resolution to the City Council of the City of Ballen Park declaring to become a Vision Zero community, adopting a Vision Zero policy and approving the development of an action plan with the, with the clear goal of eliminating traffic facilities and severe injuries in the city roads and streets in the next 10 years. So at this point, I want to also, first of all, thank and recognize my colleague, the Vice Mayor Hernandez, for bringing this on the agenda, thank you, Vice Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I know that we spoke about this in depth, but I, Sam, I just wanted to see if you can just take a, a minute or two, just to kind of provide an overarching review of what it is that we're actually going to be adopting here, if we do. And again, this is just, you know, compliments the work that you and your team and the rest of the council's been doing around safe streets, the safe school routes, you know, as Councilmember Garcia mentioned, you know, the quiet zone and so forth, so again, if you can just kind of help us, you know, briefly, just for the audience that perhaps was not listening at 5:30 this afternoon, or 5 o'clock today, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem, good evening, Mayor and City Council. First, I, I want to start by thanking Active SGB, who provided a very thorough presentation earlier during open session. And then I want to thank Mayor Protem Paul Hernandez for bringing this item to the forefront and championing, you know, the Vision Zero policies and movements. So basically, what we're doing tonight, there's a resolution for consideration by the City Council to adopt a Vision Zero policy and declare itself to become a Vision Zero community. So, so what that means is that by doing this, you start a process for developing a action plan for Vision Zero, which just to sum it up very quickly, it is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries, and it increases safe, healthy and equitable movement for, for all users of the streets and roads. So the City of Ballen Park, about nine years ago, started this process with the Complete Streets policy, which was a very robust policy, and it's used as a model for other cities to use. Also, a Green Streets policy was adopted, and a lot of activities in that, oh, in the safer routes to schools are policies. So all of these policies, a collection of policies that addresses certain aspects of safety in the street, involving bicyclists, pedestrians, and, and vehicles all sharing the road. So what this does, Vision Zero sort of kind of encompasses and brings together all of these efforts under one main goal, which is to get to a point where fatalities and severe injuries are completely eliminated, thus bringing that to zero, and that's, that's where the term Vision Zero comes from. So tonight, the resolution will adopt the Vision Zero policy, will declare the city to become a Vision Zero community, and will authorize the development of the action plan. That pretty much sums up the Vision Zero.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, and we'll make that available as well on the, on the website, because it's, it's a phenomenal program, and it continues on what we've done in the past, I would, this enhances that. Thank you very much, yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you. Sam, I also wanted us, as mentioned, as we discussed earlier, to go ahead and include the safe, I'm sorry, the quiet zone efforts as part of that action plan, because I think that, as you mentioned, the complete streets, safe routes to school, plus the quiet zone progress that we've made, efforts, implementation in some cases will be a launching point for, you know, expanding on that for the Vision Zero. So just wanted to remind you if you could include that in the action plan.
Yes, absolutely, all of these efforts will be included, the, the quiet zone. Last year, we did a SSARP citywide traffic collision study that would be included. All of the projects we've done so far, which in no small part were a result of the policies that we have adopted, so a lot of the projects that are going on right now are a direct, a direct result of these policies that we have put in place. So with Vision Zero, it sort of brings everything, all of those projects, under one roof, and will help us be very competitive in terms of grants and things of that sort.
Thank you. Sam, and in speaking of grants, this whole project will be strictly done through grants. You will make sure that everything's funded by the grant opportunities that we get?
Absolutely, so a lot, the vast majority of our projects that we've done so far have been grant-funded, they're also supplemented by local return funds. And earlier, in, in the presentation by Active SGB, you know, one of the things that they were calling out for was putting aside some of this local return money for these efforts, and yeah, absolutely, we've been doing that, we're going to continue to do that. You know, happy to report that, you know, what, whether there's a 5 to 10%, you know, you know, sort of rule of thumb to, to put aside, we've been exceeding that, and we've been putting some money aside. Also, for the Quiet Zone project, that, that project is completely funded. We bonded our local return measure M revenue. So we put together a bond which we're going to draw from, right now. Those projects are under development. The Pacific and Bogart intersection, it will be our first undertaking in, in the goal to reach the quiet zone. So all of these projects, collection of projects, all of the work you see going on in streets, it's all coming together, and it, it just comes together so beautifully under this Vision Zero idea, and I couldn't be more excited to get going and developing the action plan.
Okay, thank you, Sam.
All right, thank you very much for the questions, Ms. Alejandra Avila, Councilmember. All right, so at this point, council members have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, I just, I think I would be remiss if, again, we didn't recognize our good partners with Active SGB, David Diaz, who's, you know, a, a big advocate in and around this item, and, you know, also, you know, someone that we're borrowing is his ear and his time, you know, from, from time to time, so again, thank him for, for everything that he's doing. And with that, you know, I'd like to make a motion if, if you're okay, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Thank you. To adopt Resolution, you know, 2020-044, Resolution to the City Council of Ballen Park, declaring to become a Vision Zero community and adopting a Vision Zero policy, approving the development of the action plan with clear goals in to eliminate traffic fatalities and severe injuries, excuse me, injuries on city roads in the next 10 years, and to also include, as Councilmember Garcia has mentioned, the quiet zones in the action plan, that is my motion.
I'll, I'll second, any objections, see not so move, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and go to the next item, which we have the City Council acting as a successor agency of the Dissolved Community Development Commission Consent Calendar. So we have both SA1 and SA2, the successor agency to the Dissolved Community Development Commission of the City of Ballen Park warrants and demands. I'll go ahead and pass both of them, at this point, successor agency to the Dissolved Community Development Commission of the City of Ballen Park Treasury Report, July 2020, so that is my motion.
Second.
Any objections, see not so move. All right, we have a public hearing, a request to the City Council from the Planning Commission to approve Development Agreement 20-042, grant a cannabis permit for the new cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facilities within the, within the I industry zone pursuant to ordinance 1408, location 4517 Little John Street, say, uh, say, excuse me, applicant Fresh Made LLC, case number DA 20-04, or can, and 20-01. What I'll do at this point, I will ask the Deputy City Clerk, as I open up the public hearing, if we have any, any calls or any letters or any person with input about this subject, Madam City Clerk?
You have not received any letters in favor or in opposition, Mayor.
And no calls?
No.
Okay, all right, so at this point, there is no call for the in favor or opposing, so at this point, I will now take it over to the council members. If not, I'll go ahead and entertain
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Would you please close the public hearing?
Thank you very much, at this point, I will now close the public hearing, that is my motion, do a second.
Second.
Any objections, see not so move, thank you very much. At this point, I'll go ahead and staff recommend that the city hold a public hearing and introduce the first reading by, by, by title-only ordinance, 1454, entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballen Park, authorizing the City of Ballen Park to enter into a development agreement with the Fresh Rain LLC for the cultivation and/or manufacturing of cannabis at the real property located at 4517 Little John Street, APN 8535-023-039, within the City of Ballen Park, that is my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any objections? See not so move. All right, so this will come back again, right, for a second reading. All right, item 10, item 10, which is a
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you, legal counsel, a, a request, item 10, a request to the City Council from the Planning Commission on the Amendment to Develop Agreement 18-14, currently located at 150110 Arrow Highway, to add an additional location at 13110 Spring Street for a cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility within the IC. Industrial Commercial Zone pursuant to ordinance 1442, location 15010. Arrow Highway applicant, V R D Inc., case number DA 18-14. At this point, I will ask the Deputy City Clerk, Ms. Morales, if we have had anyone opposing or in favor of this, with this, for the here, public hearing.
Not my air.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can you open the public hearing?
Yes, I did, so you know what, let me go back, yes, sorry about that, at this point, I will open up the public hearing. I'm hearing from the Ms. Robles that there is no, there's no, no one has requested to, nor letters for the public hearing. So at this point, I will go ahead and officially close the public hearing, that is my motion, is there a second? Hello?
Second.
Okay, second by who?
Councilmember Ayala.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ayala, second it, any objections, see not so move.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
For the record, there was no calls in favor, and there was no calls against, and there was no writings in favor and no writings against, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the record, all right, so at this point, I'll move for the staff that, the City Council Thank you for the record. Alright, so at this point, I'll move for the staff that the city can hold a public hearing, introduce the first reading by title only. Ordinance one four five five entitled ordinance of the city council of the city Ballin Park to enter into a development agreement with the VBRD Inc. For the cultivation and or manufacturing of cannabis at the real property located at one five zero one zero Arrow Highway. Uh, APM eight, eight five three five dash zero two three dash zero one one and one three one one zero Spring Street. APN eight, eight five three five dash zero two three dash zero two five within the city of Ballin Park. So that is my motion. Is there a second? Hello?
Second.
I was second. Any objections? See none, so move. Alrighty, so at this point, we'll go over to the report of officers. Eleven, approve and adopt resolution number, number twenty twenty dash zero four five entitled resolution of city council, the city of Ballin Park. Uh, appointing representatives and, and alternate, an official representative of the city and review and appoint uh, members to the city for the San Gabor Valley Water Association Independent Cities League Finance Authority and the Foothill Transit. Can we bring this back?
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we bring this back, I think there was a little confusion at the last meeting that I did not attend.
Okay.
I was the alternate for the cog and I believe you guys voted that I was no longer the, the alternate. Monica was the, the rep and I was the alternate. So according to the minutes, um, she nominated Ms. Ayala to be the rep and she um, stated that she wanted to remain the alternate, but I am the alternate.
Okay.
And I would have loved to been part of this conversation because I did want to stay up the alter, as the alternate because she did ask me if I could attend the meetings, if I wanted to be the representative. And I told her that I couldn't because I couldn't attend the meetings and, but I meant to stay as the alternate. And I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, sorry about that. So who, who was alternate? Someone could remind me, uh?
I was the alternate and Ms. Garcia was the representative. And so, and I know you requested to move this so that I could be present and I wasn't present at that meeting when the change was made.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Okay, so the, so then currently, right now, we have, we, the
So she nominated Ms. Ayala to be the representative and she said she would remain as the alternate, but I wanted to remain as the alternate since she was a representative.
Okay.
So I think there was a little confusion um, happening at the meeting. I know there was a lot going on when you guys made the motion. So I really would like to remain as the alternate. If we can put that on the next agenda.
Okay, alright, yes, uh, uh, council member, uh, uh, Avila, I, I, I'll, I'll come right back to you at this point. Uh, we'll go to council member Gina Ayala.
Thank you, mayor. I remember um, distinctly what occurred and I remember that um, council member Garcia did uh, mention that she had a conversation with council member Avila. Um, I think that's what um, council member Avila is alluding to. And as I recall, council member Garcia, uh, I'm not sure if she was the one that nominee, I, yeah, she was the one that nominated me. Uh, and there was a second to, to uh, put me as the representative. And then we had motion to have her as the alternate. I'm sorry, council member Garcia, and then we did have a vote of that.
Okay, do we have a recording? Do we have a recording?
And I have it. Yes, there's a recording. So I have, I do have a text message from Ms. Garcia and she asked me and I still have it. She asked me if I wanted to be the representative. And I told her that, no, that I didn't want to be the representative because I couldn't attend the meetings. And she said, okay, thanks for letting me know, but that was the conversation that her and I had, just about being the rep. The, being the alternate part of it was never mentioned. And yes, Ms. Ayala was nominated to be the representative, but I wanted to remain as the alternate. Is that clear?
Yeah, yeah, let's do this. Let's bring the recorded back and then straighten it out to following me. Could we do that?
Okay, okay.
Is that okay with everyone, please? And then we'll, if that's the case, then we'll go on that way.
I'm in agreement with Ms. Ayala being the representative. I just want to remain as the
The alternate, right, right. So let's bring it back to the Council member Monica Garcia, yes, ma'am.
I do think, yeah, let's go ahead and bring it back. Uh, I just want to just state for the record that I did reach out to council member Avila. And um, let's see, June eighteenth, I said, hi Alex, I've been meaning to reach out regarding San Gabor Valley cog. Would you like to attend the meetings? I haven't. Also, if you're interested, when the nominations come up, I can recommend you as the rep.
Right.
And then council member Avila responded, hi Monica, I'm sorry for the late response. I won't be able to attend the meetings. But thanks for asking. And then my response was, no worries and good to know. Enjoy your weekend. So from that exchange, um, council member Avila said she would not be able to attend the meetings. That's where, when council member Ayala was appointed, I said, let's go ahead and make her the representative if that's what, you know, she wanted and, and um, and then I would remain the alternate. Um, so it wasn't intended to be anything negative towards council member Avila. It was just that council member Avila had expressed that she was not able to attend the meetings.
Right, and that's what I said, sorry, and that's what I said, that was probably a confusion because I understood as attend as a rep and that's why I said, no, not as the rep. Well, I didn't say not as the rep, but I said, no. I couldn't attend as the al- alternate, you know, you kind of have an option if Ms. Ayala or you wouldn't be able to attend then. I would move my schedule around and that's how I took the, a text message. But that's why I said there must have been a confusion.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is let's just take up the item and um,
Yeah, let's bring it back.
Okay, alright, so at this point, we're going to bring it back to the following meeting in October. Alright, thank you very much. So at this point, thank you, thank you, council member Monica Garcia and also council member Alejandro Avila and also council member Gina Ayala for the input. Alright, so at this point, council members wishing to share anything before it goes out to regular city council meeting? At this point, yes, uh, council member Gina Ayala.
Thank you. Um, I just want to take this opportunity to, um, first of all, I want to acknowledge, uh, Dr. Paul Flores, the pastor at Redeemer Church. Um, thank him for that wonderful invocation that he gave us at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I really uh, appreciate um, his, his uh, thinking, um, his prayer, his thoughts. Um, especially uh, being a lifelong resident as he has been and a, I would say, a pillar of this community. I appreciate um, every word that he says. I also want to, um, at this time, acknowledge um, our community development director, Ben Martinez, um, along with our city planner, Ron Garcia for um, really working together, uh, bringing us um, the great presentation um, regarding the uh, proposed development design for the senior housing that we'll have out here in front of Metro Link Station. So thank you, Ben, and um, you were very open to, to answer all my questions. Uh, and we had a great conversation about it. So I want to, uh, thank you for all of that. Um, also, um, I want to also thank, uh, Ben and his staff, um, for bringing forth that uh, presentation regarding, um, the cares funding and um, regarding the rental housing and the business assistant programs. Cause I know that's really going to be beneficial to a lot of people in our community. And I look forward to uh, being able to assist them with basically five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And I think that's going to be very um, useful. It's gonna, it's needed. And, and I look forward to, um, that process taking place and, and us being able to assist them. Uh, and last, but certainly definitely not least, I want to um, uh, acknowledge our chief deputy uh, city clerk, uh, Ms. Lourdes Morales for um, her exceptional presentation. Um, I've always valued, uh, Ms. Smith's work, um, her professionalism, her commitment to our city. And I want to thank her for uh, uh, going above and beyond, especially securing those uh, ballot locations. Um, and we've had long conversations about it. So I really appreciate her, um, and I, as I do all our staff. So I, I uh, just wanted to end on that note. So thank you, Lulu, and thank you, everybody. Thank you, mayor.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I will go ahead and move for a German at the regular city council meeting. That is my motion. Is there a second? Second by council member Gina Ayala.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can we report out?
From the study session?
Yes. Could we report out?
Yes, yes. Let, let's go ahead and, uh, we'll get and report out for the study session. What, what did we want to report out from the study session?
Uh, just needed to report out that the council did consider several items in closed session. No final action was taken and no reportable action is uh, uh, available.
Alright, thank you very much. And I'll go ahead and uh, make a motion to close out the uh, study session. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objections? See, see none, so move. Thank you, legal counsel. Alright, so at this point, I'll go ahead and move for a German, the regular city council meeting. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. Alright, so at this point, I'd like to open up the uh, finance authority. And we have consent calendar. Uh, we have uh, one uh, uh, item. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Taken by Vice Mayor Hernandez. Any objection? See none, so move. At this point, I'll move to close the finance authority uh, committee meeting. That is my motion.
Second.
Taken by Vice Mayor Hernandez. Any objections? See none, so move. Alright, the next one that we have is the housing authority. We have consent counters, items one and two. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Hello? Okay, there's a second, the second by Vice Mayor Hernandez. Are there any objections? See none, so move. Alright, before, before I adjourn, I have two items that I want to make sure that we look at. Uh, for one, the, the LA, the LA Fitness, that whole new center is very nice, the seven eleven across the street, which is a little controversial. Uh, however, we got, I believe we got through it. Um, I, I, I'm not certain how we did not plan uh, to have a street light in that area. I, I mean, there's major traffic. Um, I guess we, they, we could have planned that with LA Fitness and those different uh, businesses that were there. And you have the, or the seven elevens. Uh, that, that crosswalk is uh, challenging. I walk over there and cross. I mean, you have traffic that's coming in off of there. So uh, uh, let, let's look and see what we can do. Um, I think it is going to be essential that we place a street light in that area in order to safeguard those uh, that are coming from across the street or at the same time trying to exit out of that center. It is very challenging. We have to remember it's a freeway entrance and exit, so you have vehicles coming in there at, at a very large rate. So we can look into that.
You know, mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead, finish, finish, I'll make a comment about that.
Alright, the, second also, um, the ninety nine cent store, someone has got to get a hold of them. They need to clean up that sidewalk area. It is literally, she tells you with plastic bags. Uh, they need to have someone out there clean that up. So Ben, we could uh, please make sure that, uh, we look into that. It's a ve- very, very important. Alright, um, yes, uh, thank, thank you, uh, very much. And um, there was an, uh, just want to share with everyone, um, about a, oh, well, about a week and a half, when, when we had the major heat that was in a hundred. Uh, both council member Gina Ayala visited the um, a uh, complex area off of Los Angeles where somehow the owners wanted to send a letter to them, uh, uh, to the actual management, whoever it is, Robert. They had all the residents there pull out their air conditioners from the actual windows because they replaced them with new windows. So I contact, I was able to contact the management and I spoke to the maintenance person. And I said, how can it be possible that you're asking these residents to pull out the air conditioner that they have on the window? Uh, especially when it was going to be a hundred and something because we offered the community center, thank goodness. I don't know if some of them went or not, but I want to, I'll get the address, Robert, we're going to send a letter to the management. I, it's, it, it's some, it's unbearable that they cannot place an air conditioning system. Some of the residents there didn't want to be disclosed because of the potential retaliation and I understand that because they're renting. But still, they, they're, the um, some of them had to go out and buy a five hundred dollar, six hundred dollar uh, um, air conditioner that you have in the home with the air duct out in the window. But it, 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 it does not make sense. So uh, uh, I'll talk to you off, off the record and we'll inform the, the, the city council at the following meeting. Uh, we need to send a letter. That's just, that's inhumane. Uh, to treat uh, these individuals that are renting there at, at, I believe at, was it sixteen hundred dollars a, a game? What's that?
Sixteen, oh. Sixteen hundred dollars, yes.
Sixteen, small, smaller duplexes, probably no more than a bit, maybe uh, eight hundred square feet or less. Uh, that's just uh, unacceptable and inhumane. So I just want to share that with the city council. Alright, so at this point, I'll give the, the uh, the floor over to my colleague, council member Alejandro Avila.
Um, I just wanted to bring up the, the same thing you brought up about um, the LA Fitness and that section right there. I recall having a conversation with Sam uh, about, about that. And something was said about when the gas station came in, they were going to do something about that because they were doing a study because it is very dangerous, uh, getting through that section, coming in and out of the parking lot. Luckily, right now, LA Fitness is not open, so the traffic is not as bad, but once it does open up again, uh, it does pose a danger for, for anybody coming out of that parking lot. Uh, the restaurants are very busy, so it continues to be dangerous. But I do recall that um, once the gas station came in and started the construction, that they were going to address that problem there. So I don't know what happened. Sam, do you recall that?
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you, council member. Um, so we did um, our own study and um, and the developer that did their own study and it wasn't warranted. So we thought that conditions might change after the uh, gas station was constructed and that we would take another look at it, uh, once that um, is uh, in place. So we are, we're still on our radar. We're still going to look at it. I still get uh, complaints even
Yes.
Uh, even during the, you know, these times where the gym is not being utilized, but
Right.
Uh, I, I, I have a neighbor who works for UPS and every time he sees me, he complains about it. So I, I keep, I keep hearing about it and yeah, we, we're definitely going to take a look at it.
And I know a lot of district, um, a lot of district employees go and buy food from those restaurants there and they have addressed it. They told me that i- it is dangerous to, to get out of the parking lot, especially if, if they're trying to make a left turn or what have you. So yes, and we can look into it. I agree with the mayor. I really thought it was going to be taken care of once the gas station started the construction. So thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Sam, let me, Sam, I, I find it hard. You, you, you indicated that the, the study indicate that they did not warrant it for
I know.
Yeah, I find it hard to believe. Sam, let me say this. That street, that area has always been extremely busy with vehicles. I mean, that's a freeway entrance, a freeway exit. I, I don't understand that study. However, let's, let's look into that, uh, because this, that, that, the the amount of traffic in that area has definitely gone up, but
And especially because there's a school right there too. So let's take the, the, the consider, into consideration that there's school traffic. Right now, there's no school traffic. But again, once that school stra- traffic starts, i- it will get worse.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. So at this point, I will go ahead and move, uh, for closure of the uh, housing authority. That is my motion. Is there a second? Hello? Okay, seconded by council member Gina Ayala. Any objections? See none, so move. Thank you very much. We have a Ballin Park, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Go celebrate Independence Day.
That's right, Marie. Thank you.